The approval of the minutes of June 10th, 2025, our monthly bill list. The purchase order to Tyler Technologies for the purchase of Enterprise Asset Management Software Module for Public Works in the amount of $136,846. A resolution recognizing July 20, I'm sorry, July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. We need to set a town council public hearing for August the 12th for rezoning request by DW LLC property owner and applicant to rezone property located on the north side of Brammer Lane and adjacent to the east side of 2500 Brammer Lane, northeast, all of tax parcel 501-1-130D, a portion of tax parcel 501-113F, and a portion of tax parcel 501-1-1301, and a portion of tax parcel 80-5-1, consisting of approximately 2.57 acres from A agriculture district to I2 and general industrial. The property is designated as industrial on future land use map for the 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. We need to set a public hearing for August the 12th, 2025 for a conditional use permit request by Lauren Potts, property owner and applicant to allow for a single-chair beauties parlor as a major home occupation on property located at 450 Hemlock Street, northeast tax parcel 529-19-3 in the two-family residential R2 district. The property is designated as residential, the future land use map, the Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan dated 2013.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second and discussion.
Yeah.
I do have just some questions on some of the bill list. Is this where you would like to discuss that?
Okay.
Okay. Just a few questions.
If you'll quote the page number so we can catch up with them.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Page three, there's three charges to Rachel Coleman for Launch Christiansburg. And my question about that is, I see it has a separate name here for that department. Was that, is, am I correct that that money was donated for Launch Christiansburg?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Is that going to be like re-upped every year or?
Yes.
Okay. And then, these might not necessarily be in order because I pulled them. Yeah, this is on page 13 under Human Resources. There's just some things I need some clarification on. One is to Rebecca Conroy for employee chair massages for the month of June, $450 for Human Resources.
Was that the health fair?
Correct.
Okay, and that makes sense. And then there was a workshop for martial arts directly under that in May 16th.
What was that for?
Human Resources.
It was part of the wellness program.
Okay, thank you.
Employee Wellness Program.
Okay. And this, just a question about the dog classes. I see they were $1,620. Do we know what the return on those classes is?
We do charge a fee for those classes. I can find that out.
Okay, great, thank you. And then Virginia Media, there's four charges on the same page for the planning department, and it's several hundred dollars, but it says Main Street Marketplace. What exactly is that?
Legal ads for rezonings.
That's what I figured. Okay, I'm learning. Okay. And Town of Hillsville, contract payout $7,500 bucks for the police department.
That was to pay out an employment contract of an employee that we hired.
Thank you.
They had him under contract and he.
Okay, I didn't know if we did something with other municipalities that we had contracts?
Buy out a contract of an employee that'll be coming, he'll be coming to work here. He's actually employed now, but he'll be coming to work next week.
Makes perfect sense, thank you. Okay, and then this one here, I don't know if it's in the wrong area or what. Mansfield Oil Company Fuel Billing, $16,401.73 in the fringe pole.
That should be townwide fuel, sorry.
That's, I'm sorry.
It should be under fuel, not.
Yeah, that's the townwide fuel, that's our fuel.
Okay, it's just under the wrong, okay.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
That makes sense too. Okay, and then one, and this is just my ignorance here, so again, I'm trying to learn as I go. Salem Stone Corporation on page seven, and there are several for that for Rock, and this one is for Rock also, but most of them say street operations or storm drain operations. This one says streets non-eligible, and it's the only thing under that. What is that?
Streets non-eligible is a category that we use to charge things that are non-reimbursable.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it, thank you.
You got us?
I have a question too. There was a bill on there, I didn't write down the number, but I know it was under the Women's Virginia Municipal League. Why are we paying for that? I thought we're not supposed to be political.
Virginia Municipal League? We're a member of that.
No, the women's.
The Women's League of Voters?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Women's League of Voters.
We pay them to put out the facts for voters, the publication.
Why are we doing that?
We've done that for years.
I just thought that we were not supposed to be political when it comes down to things like that.
That's basically a service contract they're doing.
So we have a contact with them?
I don't know what it is, but it could be the same as a service contract. It's an agreement that they will print it and we'll reimburse them. But I think that's, they're reimbursed not only by us, but I mean, everybody, all of the municipalities participate in this.
Is that part of the forum that they put on, is it contribute to that cost or?
No, this is, the Facts for Voters is a publication with basically contacts from municipal government for the county Blacksburg and.
It also has the House of Delegates and State.
Yes, it does.
It's a, it's a pretty good sized brochure.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah.
I don't know if the comments are questions. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six of, thank you. Under introductions and presentations, we have the really brand spanking new Montgomery County Blacksburg Christiansburg Regional Tourism Office Executive Director Samantha Lautisay, two percent regarding office operations and programs. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all so much for having me. It's certainly an honor to be standing here in front of you all, most definitely because I am born and raised in Christiansburg, so being able to serve this town in this capacity as well as Blacksburg and Montgomery County is truly an honor. And again, thank you all so much for supporting that and supporting the tourism department. I'm today just going to very briefly give you all a report of just some departmental updates that we've been working on since I've came on for the past, well now, three weeks, talking about some stakeholder engagement that I have been doing, a strategic planning progress, some media activity, as well as some upcoming outreach that I have planned as well. I just want to let you all know that our efforts are continuing to align with the regional branding, that's the go-to-town, and we're continuing to foster collaborative relationships to strengthen the tourism in Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Montgomery County. And we are, the tourism office has and continues to make great strides in this area. So in terms of operational updates, I am working on building a database as an effort to be able to track and report out numbers and metrics for any requests that we have for marketing collateral, as it is in our visitor guides, when people reach out wanting those sent to them, whether that's going to be local or within the state, the nation. Most recently, we actually had Mel a visitor guide and welcome packet out to Poland, so that's really exciting, so hoping to build off that momentum. Also, that is able for us to track our media recognition, so we're able to talk through what towns and what mediums are being recognized, and again, understanding that you all really want to see that quantitative metric, so making sure that we have those systems in place to be able to report that out to you. We are also currently working through a platform that was really going to hone in on tourism and tourists here in this area, so hoping to get those Ts crossed and Is dotted here before long and report that out to you all. In terms of our external engagements, I hit the ground running when I came on, really wanting to make sure that I was able to build those collaborative relationships, starting with statewide with the Virginia Tourism Corporation. Kalen Hunter, her and I were able to meet and had some great conversations about some strategic planning processes that we're going to have coming up, and I'll talk about that here momentarily. Continuing the relationship with Visit NRV, so that's the regional tourism group that we have with Pulaski, Giles, City of Radford, and Floyd. And so if you recently saw on our social media, we posted where we have a one-page ad where we are promoting the region with a giveaway for a state in Montgomery County, or pardon me, in the New River Valley, and part of that, we have some giveaways for Montgomery County, and we have our logo and brand on there. I had a great meeting with Brad Epperaly with the Christiansburg Parks and Rec, really was able to stay here where we are able to support Parks and Rec and what does that look like, and walked away with a lot of great ideas that hoping to build off of. I was able to drop off some visitor guides for him so that we can have them at all of the localities for any types of tournaments coming up, so that way we can have it at the snack station as folks are coming up, they can grab those. But also going to work on updating those lawn signs that we have in the facilities, making those a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, eye-catching, and the message and content is going to be a little bit more updated and on-brand. Also had a great meeting with Geiger and Associates. They are the ones that bring the travel journalists to Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Montgomery County for their fam tours or familiarization tours. Those happen in October and in May, and so we are hoping to get a fall date on schedule. And as I was talking with them, really wanted to make sure that as we have those travel journalists coming to visit us, again, making sure that all of our towns and localities are equally visited. While we can't truly control what the travel journalist put out on their end, making sure that as they're here, they're able to really experience all that Montgomery County and the two towns have to offer. Also going to be hosting a familiarization tour with VTC. This was requested by Kalen Hunter, so really excited to have her come here in July. It's going to be a short visit, just 10 to 3 for one day, but really hoping to really strengthen that relationship, especially when it comes to their social media. They have a large following and a huge presence on there, and quite frankly, we just haven't been on that platform. So really going to make sure that we build that relationship in hopes that we're able to be put on there and able to market and tap into their reach as well. Been doing some marketing communication audits as it comes to our website, our photo library, again, making sure that everyone is equally represented. As I'm sure a lot of you folks know, I came from onward New River Valley where I really had to manage the relationships and representation of five localities, so this is something that I feel I did very well in that position, and certainly am going to continue that here in this position as well. And then lastly, I just want to bring up that strategic planning process that I am going to be working with VTC with. Kalen Hunter and I have a meeting coming up in July where we will talk about the next process of scheduling time with our localities, our stakeholders, that we can really get time on your calendar and start through that strategic planning process, hoping to do most likely a three-year planning process just to really lay the tracks and be a guiding light for what our tourism department can do moving forward. So that is my report. It's been a very fun-filled and busy three weeks, and again, just really honored and grateful to be standing in front of you all today representing the tourism department. Thank you.
Comments?
I'd just like to say welcome on board.
Thank you.
Look forward to see what you can do and bring to the tourism.
I appreciate that, thank you, Tim.
Hi there, how are you?
Doing wonderful, thank you.
It's good to see you in there. I have some questions.
Certainly.
I know that the, I probably, you probably have heard that I have been very much onto the tourism thing because I haven't felt like the money that the town of Christiansburg has to spend in tourism has really done a lot for us over the years, and so with that said, there is a lot of things that I just really hope that we can get accomplished with the tourism. And one of those things, it was mentioned the other day, like signs for us and everything else, like even on the park and stuff, I don't know if that was mentioned to you.
Okay.
But to see we can push forward, we have this beautiful park with, you know, sports tourism, and see if there is any money for that, for signs and things like that. But also I have a question about the website.
Yeah, certainly.
I was just actually doing some search right here about Virginia, you know, Montgomery County tourism. And when I did the search, some of the things that came up was like Montgomery County, Alabama. And then it was a whole bunch of other stuff, like things that are not even around here, to be honest. Well, they are, but they are not really close to us. And as far as like the tourism, there is like, the thing comes up, Montgomery County regional tourism, like the link for MontgomeryVirginia.com, but then you have to go over there, and then you see the site for you guys, which is GoToMontVirginiaVA.
Yes.
My question with this is, is there any way, have you guys even, what brought you guys to buy this, this website? Because the link, the domain, GoToMontVA, doesn't have no tourism anywhere. And I understand there is Montgomery County, but Montgomery County is everywhere. There is Montgomery County like all over the place.
Yes.
And I found this out because when I did, you know, with kids in school, when you want to find out about, if the schools are closed, a lot of the times what happens is around here, people don't realize that there is more than one Montgomery. So we are all looking like Montgomery is all over the country. So I don't know if that has ever been talked about, maybe buying additional domains to link to GoToMontVA, because even Montgomery is not even spelled out, GoTo, who does search for GoTo? I don't, you know? And so looking at what are the things that people are looking for, you know, I think specifics maybe can, can give you a better, you know, drawing attention to that.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, and well, certainly, I don't have an answer as to why the decision was made for buying that in terms of the, the name, but certainly can look into that, and then we can go from there.
There is a lot of ways to buy a lot more domains to link them to that, you know, to the site itself, so, and it's very inexpensive too to do that. But even when I'm looking under the, the top sites in Montgomery, I mean, it doesn't really give you a lot of things that are close by. So maybe changing some of that, and I don't know, just investing a lot more into, you know, what that looks like for most people, because it's great that we have an app now, but it also has to be the first thing to get to the app, is how you get to the app in the easiest way and the fastest way possible. And so that's just a big comment for me, and then obviously, you know, there is just a lot more that I would like to see about Christiansburg in here. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, I just want to say that I did enjoy the presentation that you gave at the meeting last week.
Thank you.
I am very hopeful with you at the lead, and I look forward to the updates to, to see what you do.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, and again, I'll echo Councilwoman Wilson, welcome aboard.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Police Chief Chris Ramsey to present on Flock Camera Program.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In watching the May 27th meeting of council, I realized watching that, that there were some questions about this program that seemed to go unanswered there. So I asked the town manager if it would be okay if I put together a brief 90-minute presentation about this.
No.
It won't take that long, but just hopefully to add a little clarity to the program and answer some of the questions that might be outstanding about this. As most of you probably know, we implemented the Flock Camera System about a year ago this month, and the first thing I think so the public has a good understanding of it is when we talk about Flock Cameras, what exactly do we mean? It's an automated license plate reader system. It's, but it's not one standalone system, it's a networked set of cameras. They're solar powered, they're mounted around jurisdictions all across the United States. It's not a video camera system. They capture still photos, high-resolution photos of cars as they travel down the highway. The camera systems can capture cars that are going up to 100 miles an hour, so they do a really good job of catching cars as they come by. The data is stored in the cloud by the Flock Company. It's not stored locally, we don't buy computers or anything like that to do this. They store the data, but we retain ownership of it. At present, the reason there's an asterisk there beside storing it for 30 days is that's how long they store it right now, right this minute, because that's been the industry standard up until this point. With the most recent, recent term of the General Assembly, Virginia passed a law saying they only want the data kept for 21 days. So we actually received an email right before I came into this meeting saying effective next month, Flock is changing the rules for all Virginia agencies. The law doesn't go into effect till January 1st, 2026, but they are changing the storage for Virginia agencies to 21 days starting next month, so they'll be in compliance with that law. The law, I'll talk a little bit more about that law change in, in a few minutes. It added some other things that, most of which we were already doing. The data through the network can be shared with other agencies, and we can see other people's information if the agencies agree to do that, and if we agree to share our data that's collected through. It creates a really powerful network as far as being able to solve crimes. The Flock Camera System started as a private sector item. This started out in gated communities and HOAs as a added security feature that people use to sell high-dollar homes and tell you, they know our community's safe, we have this system to monitor things coming and going, that kind of thing. Then it branched out into the public sector, so now you see them at college campuses, businesses can buy into it. It's not just a government operation. Flock's a private company, they sell their product to anybody that wants to buy it, and you become a member of the network by choice if you choose to do that. Locally, you can see the list of agencies and jurisdictions that are using the cameras around us already. They have, most everybody already had those before we got into the program last year. You can see the numbers, I'm not going to read all of that off to you, but just within the New River Valley, there are about, there are a little bit more than 60 cameras in use throughout Pulaski, Giles, Montgomery County. That doesn't go towards Roanoke, but they're pretty much everywhere. They're all throughout the state of Virginia, and they're all throughout the United States. I wanted to talk for just a minute about some of the things that Flock's not. I know some of the questions arose, does it use facial recognition? Does it capture images of drivers as they go down the road, that kind of thing? It doesn't. It's, it's got nothing to do with facial recognition. The images that it captures are profile side shots of the car and the rear of the car, so you can get a description of the car and the plate. And the reason it focuses on the rear instead of the front, you know, a lot of states don't require you to have a front tag, so they want to get a image. So we, the engineers go out and mount them, and they set them up so they're catching traffic going away from the camera. So it's camera, cars are already passing it and going away as the pictures are being taken. It doesn't use AI, there's no artificial intelligence. In our system, in our contract, there's no gunshot detection. They do have that as a feature with the company, if you want to buy the hardware, pay the fees, you can put that in and it'll give you alerts if gunshots go off. We did not do that. There is no live video feed with cameras, it's not something you can turn on and sit and watch and see how many cars drive by or anything like that. It's just a, it's, it's almost like a trail cam, or, you know, Hunter's camera that when something moves in front of it, it takes a picture of it. It's not intended for speed enforcement, it's not a red light camera, it doesn't do any of that things. And as the current state of the law stands right now, it's also not considered a search under the Fourth Amendment, although there are some cases that are challenging that right now. Once the data is collected and in the system, we can use it to conduct queries of the system to see what's going on. Now, what we already had in place in our policy and what the Virginia law reiterated is this has to be done in conjunction with a legitimate criminal investigation. The law now spells out the things you can use this to investigate and how you do it. So it can't just be a random, I'm curious, I want to see where my wife went tonight, and I'm going to type in our tag and see if it popped by. And I took a little screenshot of the search window on the Flock site. You can see the first blank you have to fill in is the reason for the search, and you can't proceed any further unless you list what crime's being investigated. The change in the law now makes the case number required also. So you have, we actually have to have a documented CAD incident or case number that's being investigated and a reason, the crime, the criminal reason for the investigation to run the search. Once you have that, you, then you can query the system by tag number, by vehicle make, model, color, body style, you can use other, they call it the vehicle fingerprint, you can really drill down and get specific with it. Roof racks, window decals, bumper stickers, and that's not going to read your Go Hokey's bumper sticker, but it'll tell a car, it'll pick out cars that have bumper stickers if your suspect vehicle had one. And you can put in, you can even put in a percentage of certainty, so if you're interviewing a witness, it, it was night, it was, I think it was a black car, but it was a dark car, you know, we can put certainty at 35% that it was black, and it'll widen out the search a little bit and get dark colored cars. But if it's bright daylight, car was bright red, I'm 100% certain, you rule out everything except red car. So it's really not just a random search of everything that went by, you really are able to drill down effectively and get good information out of that. On the flip side of that, having a description of the car, you can also search an area. So if you know, I have a camera at a certain location and we had a crime occur right there by it, then I can search, you know, two hours or 15 minutes or whatever time period I want in that location to see if a suspect car might have driven past that camera, and it might help you generate a lead on who you're looking for for that. And then the other search item is hot lists, just like, that's just what it means, what you think of from VSN or State Police, stolen cars, wanted cars, Amber Alerts, anything that's already in a system. They coordinate with all the systems throughout the United States and have those tags in there, so if something's stolen from another jurisdiction drives by, it pops an alert in the officer's car, lets them know that there's a stolen car in your jurisdiction. I'll give you a couple examples of how that's proven really effective for us locally lately. As already talked about a little bit, our policy was in place before we implemented the system. We wanted to make sure before we turned, you know, opened this up and let officers start doing this, everybody was trained in accordance with what the company says they have to know to be able to use it, what the industry standards are, and everybody had signed off on our policy. So we had in place that they can only use it for legitimate purposes. The policy addresses the guidelines for use, how they're to respond to alerts, how they do queries and access the system, who can actually make entries to our hot list. It's not just anybody that can enter a tag into it. We have a coordinator, and we have supervisors who are able to enter cars into the system that are going to pop up an alert. How we deal with maintenance, thankfully, that's part of the contract and all the company. And then data storage and retention. Flock automatically purges all the data after 30 days, and as I said, it's going to change to 21 days in a few days. The retention part of it, if it's, if it's video or, sorry, wrong word, if it's a picture that's associated with a crime and we're investigating, we've got a case on it, we can now download that, and it becomes part of the criminal case file. And at that point, it's retained in accordance with the Library of Virginia's retention schedule for that criminal investigative case file, because now it's no longer in that big lump of data, it's one individual piece of evidence that's in our case file, just like anything else would be in our case file. So we hang on to that as long as we need to, and as long as the Library of Virginia allows us to do that. With digital records, the Library of Virginia changed those case file retention schedules to now, serious crimes, you have to keep it for a long time, 70. 75 years, 100 years, depending on what the crime is. When it was paper files, they'd let you get rid of it sooner, but now that everything's digital, you have to hold on to stuff for a lot longer. I just wanted to give an example too, in furtherance of the accountability piece. In addition to everybody knowing the policy and kind of being, following the rules on their own honor, we can also run audits through the system. We can audit our organization as a whole. We can go in and search individual users to see who's run what tags, what the reason they gave was, that kind of thing, and find out, you know, if we get a complaint, if we get a problem or a concern develops that somebody's misusing the system, we can track every time somebody's conducted a search. The new legislation, I'm not going to go too deep into it, other than to say it did add some reporting criteria to the state, changed that retention to 21 days. It did address the FOIA question that I think was brought up in that meeting earlier about what if somebody, you know, wants to do a FOIA request on somebody else for the purpose of harassing them or something like that. The new change in legislation did say the data that we have pursuant to this is not subject to release under FOIA. So it's not, it is protected under that. It added some training standards. It again codified what we can use the system for, and we have to report every April, a whole lot of stuff to the state about what searches were done, all the case numbers, what they were for. We have to do demographic information on anybody that was pulled over as a result of a stop or a result of a Flock hit, that kind of thing. It establishes, and we already had this in policy too, that a Flock hit alone's not considered probable cause for anything. You have to verify it and develop suspicion to conduct a stop based on some other information besides just this thing went off. So it just clarified some of the things we were already doing. Our results, in the year we've been using this, we've had over a million vehicles read by the cameras. We've had 682 searches by our users within the agency, 278 hits from hot lists, whether it's Amber Alert, stolen car, that kind of thing. And in full transparency, 59 of them are false hits. That's not really as bad as it sounds though, because one, that's a tremendously small percentage of a million reads. But also 85% of those fall into one of those three categories. And explanation for those categories, a bad read would be the camera thought an M was a W. So it flagged that this is a wanted car or whatever. Well, it pops the picture up on the officer's computer in the car when it gets, when he gets an alert. And they have to verify that this is, the picture is what I'm looking at in front of me before they pull it over. So they look at it and say, this is not the same tag. They never stop the car and the person never knows the thing popped up. Sex offenders, part of the Virginia deal was they put in registered sex offender tags and it pops up when one drives by. Doesn't mean they get stopped, doesn't mean anything happens there. It just does that. And then one stolen plate is when someone's reported their tag stolen, but only one of the tags was stolen. And they keep driving around with the other tag on their car, so they're the legitimate driver. They drove past the camera. We got a stolen tag hit, but that's the legitimate operator of the car. So that's where those come from. So I would give you some data on ours. Just within the last couple of weeks, these things have happened. Our day shift got a Flock alert in the downtown area and they were able to locate, this was the day of one of the protests was going on downtown. So there was a lot of people downtown. The alert was on a subject that was wanted from another state for shooting into five occupied dwellings. So he's considered armed and dangerous and he's, there's active warrant for his arrest. Our officers were able to find his car and find him and get him under arrest in the downtown area without any incident, based on the fact that this alert came up. Just a couple of weeks ago, the state police and our vice unit used Flock to find information in a drug case that led to a search warrant and resulted in the seizure of 20 pounds of meth in Christiansburg. Evening shift found a stolen U-Haul at one of the hotels, just off of it, driving by a Flock. And then two, no, one weekend ago, Blacksburg PD had a warrant. We had all been looking for a person who was traveling back and forth in the area based on the Flock information. He was wanted on a nice detainer, is a drug trafficker, and they found him in Blacksburg and got him in custody. That was, that's a screen grab from one of our roll call slides that we put out just reminding the guys and thanking them for doing that. And just as a little bit of proof that these aren't isolated things, I mean, this is not something that, you know, we've had these five good things, so that's why we should have it. Within the last two months, we've located additional shooting suspects from another jurisdiction, suspects from within Montgomery County on a weapons violation, brandishing a firearm, two domestic violence suspects in two separate cases, found suspects in seven shoplifting cases, located a B and E suspect and recovered thousands of dollars in stolen goods and firearm, located five stolen vehicles and one of them had a gun in it, developed leads in two counterfeiting cases, found suspects in two child pornography cases, and located an indecent exposure suspect. So this is a really powerful tool. It really aids in investigation and in locating wanted people. I know the concerns are that it's a privacy violation, that it's, there's potential for misuse. There's potential for misuse in a lot of things in police work. It exists. We control it. And when it comes, if it comes up, we deal with it as a personnel issue and handle it. And that's what I ask you to trust me to do as the chief of police. What we're seeing is some excellent results, and so far haven't had any concerns or complaints from the public about, I've been mistreated as a result of this, or I feel like somebody's following me. Frankly, I don't have the personnel, and we don't have the time to just sit and randomly search stuff to see who went to Target today or why somebody's driving around on the north end of town and things like that. We use this as another investigative tool, and it's proven highly effective so far. We're going to be completely, we are already, other than the reporting requirements that haven't taken place yet, but we'll be completely compliant with the law and the changes in the code in Virginia. And hopefully that fact that there is law on this now that regulates the use of these systems will afford the public some ease that it's not just this unregulated Wild West of data being collected. You know, it's only around for 21 days if you haven't searched it already and then it's gone. That's pretty much all I have, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
So I so appreciate you coming over here and answering a lot of questions for us, and great presentation. No questions regarding the, so is the DMV also attached to your, all your database with these cameras, or are they not?
No, it doesn't. It, it, it's a comparative tool. It matches a tag that it sees with a tag that's already been entered into this system, but it's not running the information. The officer would do that through their mobile data terminal through the V-Cen network. They are, I mean, they already have access to that now. Whether we have Flock or not, an officer can run a license tag or driver's license. And that's how they would do, you know.
But the system itself is not.
No, the system's not automatically running that.
And you said, I saw a lot of information about like the reading of the plot, you know, the license plates and stuff, but as far as the height of those, they are not, never going to get someone's face. Is that correct, or are you?
Well, they're not angled to capture the front of the car. I mean, they're angled so they'll, it's, it's in the lane that's, okay, I have to demonstrate, I'm sorry. If the car's going that way, the camera's here and it's pointed that way. So the car's already passed it when it's taking the picture. It's not, it doesn't catch the cars that's coming towards the camera. Because we want to get the rear of the car so it, so you guarantee you have that rear license plate image. So, and it does catch a side shot of it, but I've, so far, excuse me, out of a year of use, I've not seen one where you could see the driver at all through the window. You can see the side of the car, because that's how it checks. So if I enter a description, it's a white Chevy pickup with a ladder rack on the back. You know, it's got to be able to see that vehicle, just compare it and go, yeah, well, here's a white truck, so we're going to check that one. But it doesn't, you can't see inside the car.
Thank you for that. And can you do a search by a person's name instead of the license plate?
Not on this system.
Not on this system.
Now, I mean, we can do it through V-Cen if we know suspect name or something. We can search, do that, but this system's just vehicle-based.
Okay. And then the automatic, the list information about the specifics of the searches that you guys use, are those automatic dropdowns that you can choose as a police officer? Or can you actually choose, you know, which one is the reason to make it easier for you guys? Yeah?
Some of them are and some of them aren't. Some of them you have to put in, you have to type it in, and some of them are pulldowns of, like the descriptions of the cars, like roof rack or back rack or window decals or dropdown list. But the case number, type of crime, that kind of thing is typed in yourself.
Okay. And then another thing, you were saying that this is not FOI-able, but it could be FOI-able if you did a search, possibly if there is not a real case, but there was a search for someone's name, or well, not a name, but a license plate.
It's not a, it's not an exemption in the FOIA code. It's that in the license plate reader code that goes into effect this next year, they put a provision in there saying the data that's in these systems is exempt from being searched under FOIA. Now, it could be subject to a subpoena for a court order, that kind of thing. There was a case in Roanoke City just a few months ago that was in the news where the Cardinal News, somebody that worked for the Cardinal News made a FOIA request and it was denied. And he sued and they went into court, and that judge said, yes, I think you should be able to get your own information. But that case, that ruling was limited just to your information. I couldn't come in and say, I would like to get Mr. Bishop's car number and information and see where he's been going. I could search my own under that ruling. The thing that's going to be up in the air, Reed's probably better positioned to answer this than me. Now, that was before the law passed. So now, under state code, you've got a law that says this is not subject to FOIA, and that's one circuit court judge in the city of Roanoke, which is not precedent anywhere but Roanoke, making that ruling. So I don't know that we're going to see a lot more FOIA things that aren't considered to be governed by that code section that's going into effect.
I think a lot of my questions are because I was asked by a person in the public that was concerned that the town could use this as a way for them to search his license plates and everything if he was to have anything political on his card or something like that. And so it's just a concern that, you know, maybe misuse.
I mean, I think the concern with misuse is certainly a valid concern for the public to have and hold, given some of the things you've seen in the world these days. But again, the potential for that kind of misuse already exists. I mean, if I've got an officer who's willing to break the law, and that would be breaking the law, to run somebody's tag because they've got a political sticker on their car that somebody they don't like, that is, that potential's already there right now without Flock. Has nothing to do with that. And that's something that, you know, we deal with and we take very seriously if it happens, because not only is it a criminal violation, it's a policy violation. It's something people get fired over. So the potential's there, but again, the policy, the law and the audit trail, to be able to follow up and check to make sure that kind of thing's not happening is also there. So, you know, anytime you're dealing with people's information or working in a job that deals with people's rights, I mean, we deal with constitutional rights all day, every day. We have to follow what's basically an honor code and follow the law and the policy and do the right thing. And that's the standard that I hold our officers to and will continue to do. So, you know, the best thing we can do is reassure the public and say, we follow all these safeguards and do those things. And that's not an acceptable course of action for any of our officers to do.
Another question that I had was regarding the video recordings that you guys have. I know that I saw the search thing that you did in there, but you guys have the ability to go back and just look at the cameras without having to see the times or searching a, you know, a certain type of card or something. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
About the body cameras?
No, 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 no. The recordings for this.
Pictures of this?
Flock safeties. Yeah. Can you go back into the recordings and say, hey, I want to see the videos from 2:00 to 4:00 without having to see, you know, a specific, like, most people will have like their screens of their cameras and their places and stuff. Is that something that, or does it make it that difficult for you guys?
Well, I mean, you have to have a, you would have to have a crime, you know, associated with what your search was for, or the system won't let you go any further. I mean, I couldn't just go, you know, say, if we had a camera over near a Walmart, I couldn't just say, I'm going to search today between 3:00 and 5:00 for no reason. And that's the extent of my search parameters, because the system won't do that.
And you have to put a type vehicle. You just can't look at the camera for.
We can look at just the location for a time period and a date, you know. So, for example, the reason we can do that, the reason it's set up that way. If we get a shoplifting suspect at Best Buy and a person at Best Buy sees them, they leave the building, they get in a white Toyota, and they drive away at 2:30 in the afternoon, but they didn't see the tag number. You know, we can say, okay, between, we want to look between 2:00 and 2:30 on the camera that was closest to Best Buy for a white Toyota four-door. And it'll pull up all the white cars that pass that one and you can get a look at it. But again, it's not.
But it's not pulling every vehicle. You got to narrow down to what you're looking.
Narrow it down to what you're looking for. And even if it pops up three white cars in that scenario, that doesn't mean we're going to somebody's house and kick their door down. You know, that just means now we have some leads to follow up on, make contact with people and.
My silver truck isn't going to cross the screen when you're looking.
No. No, it's not going to be, if we put in the description of a white car, it's not going to pull a truck.
Exactly.
Now, silver and white, again, in total.
Yeah, okay.
Silver and white might, you know, blend together depending on the level of certainty.
And Sam's red truck ain't going to show up.
No.
Okay.
No, they're going to do the search for your car.
Bring it.
If this was.
They got my DNA. I'm no criminal.
If this was an interview again, you will definitely be hired 100 times over, so thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Appreciate your job.
So I guess, Chief, if the camera alerts to a tag of a suspected kidnapper, does it alert our officers that at such time this vehicle passed a certain place?
It does. It gives, it actually pops up a picture of the vehicle on the MDT screen. It shows the side view and the tag with a little, one of the, let me scroll back here. One of these has a, I don't know if you'd be big enough to see, but see that little block there? It says stolen vehicle plate temporary Toyota sedan. It gives them a, it gives them that kind of information block. Now, that picture's superimposed. That's not the picture it pops up, because that's 900 cars in there. But it actually captures the car that it read and pulls that car, that, a close-up of that tag and what it flagged for. If it was Amber Alert, if it's a kidnapper, if it's a wanted person, whatever. They get all that information in that moment that it passed here at 2:38 PM on this location. And then they know, that's how we found the people or the guy downtown that day. You know, they got a hit pretty close by at, right at that time. Just happened to have officers in the area and they immediately started looking for that car and found it parked on Main Street. And then got out and started pounding the sidewalk till they located the guy. And that's just how it, that's exactly how that system's intended to work. And that's why we want, we want it to get the dangerous individuals out of the community.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, our citizens' comment section. You know the drill, Chris. I'm not going to go through all this.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Rugby. I just want to thank Chief for sparing a couple officers and his officers coming down. Christina coming down for Operation Lifesaver down at Cambria Crossing for rail crossing safety. I actually learned something new. That was my first one. But if your car ever gets stuck on a railroad crossing, there's a little sign on there, on every one. And it has a number you call and it has a number that identifies the crossing. If you call that number and you give them that number, they will stop trains so that your car doesn't get hit. Now, if it's too, you know, if the train's too close, that's not going to help, but if that ever happens, I mean, it can save a life. So just remember the blue signs that are in there at every railroad crossing, public and private, throughout the United States. There's a number to call and there's a number that identifies the crossing. You give them that number, flags it in the system, and they can hopefully keep somebody from dying.
Well, hopefully you call it from outside of your car across the street, right?
Yeah, because you have to actually be on the other side of the crossing. Yeah, because you have to actually be on the other side of the crossing to read the sign.
That's what I do.
Oh, and that's the other thing, just get out of your car.
That's, there you go.
Don't, don't try to push it, don't try to restart it, don't, just get out, go.
Thank you.
Because trains don't stop on a dime.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I am Dustin Robbins, I live at 410 Pin Oak Drive, and I was just, um, I've been living in Oak Tree for about a year now, a little over a year, starting June the first. Um, I've noticed a lot of traffic crime that goes with almost no attention, except for one incident last summer where a literal high-speed chase went through Oak Tree, and I thought it was the most hilarious thing I ever saw someone attempt, because they even blocked off my road to catch the person, they did a foot, uh, search for him. Hope they found that person, but that doesn't take away the fact that there's almost no speed limit signs in Oak Tree at all. There's no children caution signs that I can see that are noticeable, the streetlights are entirely covered by trees, 'cause the HOA never cuts them. It took them over a month just to attend to last summer storms and this past winter storms. And that's an HOA issue, I understand, but the town's kinda gotta keep an eye on them, since you're technically over them, I assume. I don't really know how that governance works, because no one seems to be keeping an eye on the Oak Tree HOA's governance of itself. I was nearly hit by a 40 mile an hour car going down Providence. I did call it in because it was going too fast, I don't even think I was able to get a plate, was able to give a slight description, but like the officer here said, uh, if it's dark, there's no cameras, you can't really give a proper description, and it's just an issue. On top of that, there are cars everywhere on the sides of the roads. It is a three-lane road through most of Oak Tree. Oak Tree Boulevard and Providence are the two widest roads, the rest are just mainly actual housing roads that are two lanes minimum, which don't have that same issue, and the problem with that is grad students have moved in, they have taken over Oak Tree, which means a three-bedroom house now has three to five cars, for whatever reason, and there's nowhere to park them. This wasn't made as part of the development plan when it was been, when it was presented to this council in probably 2016, 2017, the last time they did an expansion into Oak Tree, where, uh, Providence now goes down back onto Cambria. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can deal with this, with council and the Christiansburg Police, working with the HOA to remedy this, to limit the number of cars on the road, maybe expand the road to where there's actual parking spots, like lines for parking spots at an angle, instead of like just pointing straight, make it at an angle, something similar to that. On top of, their landscaping's terrible, and even if you go down the roads that, where the parking spots are actually made for the cars, there's little divots between it to space out two cars per house. The problem with that is cars are much longer than that space allows, and you cannot drive down to park into those parking spaces. They've made trees and the drainage ditches too wide to make that physically possible, on top of the fact it is extremely dangerous just to ride at five miles an hour in a car, 'cause it just, it's, it's like this going over it, just in front of my house alone. And I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, what can we do about this? It, 'cause I, I really don't know who to even talk to at the HOA, 'cause the HOA doesn't think my road and house even exist, I've asked them many times. They say my address is not in the HOA, and all of Oak Tree's in the HOA.
You know how many different HOAs they have over there?
Yeah.
Just a question, I'm sure they have.
Well, no, I know there's, there's, I've counted half a dozen in the town alone, and I think three of them are part of the Oak Tree area, but none of them wanna own up to who owns my house. They just don't. I don't, I would love a list so I can call them all, but they're just, HOAs in general in the town don't govern themselves, they collect the money, and that's about it. Occasionally, they won't even plow the snow in front of my driveway, they won't, I have to do it every winter now. I had to do it last winter four or five times in freezing cold, literal freezing cold, it was zero degrees the last time I did it. I'll probably have to do it again this winter.
Can, can I speak? Can I speak?
Not yet. Anything else?
So, the one, one short last thing is, um, I'm curious as if the town council and Christiansburg Police Department can work with, probably VDOT most likely, to create either brochures or actual speed limit signs for e-bikes and e-scooters. They are a big problem, especially at night. I've seen them impede traffic so many times, and every time I've called on myself to try to get an, a driver who nearly hits me in trouble for doing such a stupid thing by literally riding within inches of me to where I could almost feel the car, nothing's actually done.
You got about 10 seconds.
Yeah, so that, that's why, I'm done with that, that's just wondering if someone can, you know.
Okay.
Work with the PD and VDOT to find out what to do about that.
Ms. Hicks, did you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, um, I'm sorry you're dealing with all those issues. Unfortunately, when it comes down to maintenance issues that the HOAs may not do, that's obviously something that you will definitely have to talk to the different HOAs in there. Being in real estate for so many years, it used to be one HOA, now it's many, many HOAs within the Oak Tree townhomes, and so I would just advise you to contact, you know, if you're having a problem in this street alone, or there is several streets over that you're having issues, you may wanna contact somebody that lives in those areas to contact their own HOAs, because as far as that goes, I don't think that the town will be required to do anything like that, 'cause it was privately owned properties. And so, and as far as like the, if you're thinking that the grass is too tall or something like that, you can definitely call and complain to the town, they'll probably send it to, back to the HOAs, but as far as like older things with maintenance related, I would just say, direct those comments to the HOAs that are, you know, required to take care of that and their signs, because they are there, the streets.
And therein lies the issue, that Oak Tree and all the other HOAs, they aren't owned by homeowners anymore, they're owned by businesses. I'm owned by a business. I mean, landlords have taken over all of Oak Tree.
Okay.
There's no one to contact.
You're, you're expanding your citizen.
Yeah, I was just.
Anything else, come before I count.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. If, anyone else? Closed citizens' comments, committee reports, city street committee?
No reports.
Wastewater, central business? Anything? Okay. We have apparently nothing to discuss or act on by the mayor and council, so we'll go on to staff reports. Town manager?
Uh, just mentioned our July 4th festivities will be downtown from 10:00 AM till 4:00 PM, and we'll be having fireworks at the, from the Huckleberry Park at 9:15. And I'll also point out that Town Hall, the Aquatic Center, and Rec Center will be closed for July 4th.
Okay.
Uh, Christiansburg Institute and St. John's Lodge will be having a Juneteenth festivities, Saturday, June 28th, from 3:00 to 7:00 at Depot Park. Uh, mentioned that we have a date for our employee picnic, we're planning on doing that Friday, August 8th, from 11:00 to 2:00. Uh, I'll mention that the Aquatic Center has begun the solar project this week, and I'll also mention that facade grant, uh, application deadline is this coming Monday. That, that's all I have.
Town attorney?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
Assistant town manager, treasurer, any other departments?
I will say that we got notice today that the RFP for the, uh, fire DMS study is on the street, I think it's due back July 17th, uh, and there'll be, I think Chief Hanks and I will probably be on the review committee along with some other folks from Blacksburg and Long Island County.
Very good, very good. Katie? Got everything keyed in, ready to flip a switch?
I'm ready to go.
Very, very good. Rhonda? Jim, everything pretty cool, rescue? Very good. Council reports, Mr., Mr. Bishop?
No reports.
Ms. Hicks?
Yes, please, just, um, I'm just trying to find out what day are we meeting regarding the farmer's market meeting that we're supposed to have?
That would be.
You guys have a day yet?
That, that would be July 16th is when the regular, uh, work session date is.
July 16th, okay. What time are we doing that?
6:30.
30, okay. And then, um, I would really like an update, how much are the totals for all the GAN construction, um, all the bills from the beginning to now as far as the litigation case? And I also would like to know, when there was work done, construction work done on the route on Franklin Street years ago, that work was done at nighttime? And now that we have the west side of, um, Main Street being done and hearing a concern from a business owner, just the last town council meeting, I was thinking, I've been thinking about this for, you know, for a couple weeks now, thinking about how to try to come up with, with ideas to help them, and I was wondering, why is that work not being done during the nighttime hours, considering the fact that, um, it was done on Franklin Street during working, during nighttime hours, just because of, uh, because of the traffic? I mean, there is a lot of traffic going through Main Street.
If, if you're talking the current construction right now?
Yes.
That's actually the private construction for the, the, uh, school that, that has the closure. It, it's not closed for our construction, it's closed for the private construction right now. When they are done taking the bell tower down, though, basically our contractor would begin.
So, I'm confused. I thought that you guys are gonna be doing work on the middle of the street because there is a big thing that you gotta move because of the creek water that is coming and stuff.
That's correct.
Therefore, you're supposed to close the main.
Yes, we are, yes, and we are going to close it for that purpose, basically right after they get done taking the bell tower down. And taking, taking the bell out.
So, it goes back to my question.
Did we, sorry.
And my concern, is there a possibility that that work can be done at nighttime, since the other work on Franklin Street was done during the?
We have, we have an agreement with the contractor, if we were to change that agreement, it would cost us more to, to have them only work at night, because they'd be, they'd be paying their workers more, um, you know, if we were to try to negotiate that as a change order, I would expect a substantial cost increase on, in the.
So was that negotiated in the past, that you guys?
We, we.
Put that in the contract?
We can put things like that in contracts, it's better to put those in contracts before you pre, pre-bid them, if you're gonna specify something like.
So was the work on Franklin Street pre-bid to be done at nighttime?
Uh, I would say that it was if it was done at night.
Okay, 'cause we lost our.
I know, I know, we do have a specification that they have to have Main Street open for the, the Christmas parade, which probably means they're gonna have to have steel plates across it.
Hmm, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, was there a change in what was happening? I thought at the last meeting, we were working first and they were second in line, did we switch up for some good reason?
We, we are first in line as far as the right to have the street closure, although due to concerns with the, the structure, we basically want them to take the structure down first, a, and then once they take it down, it, it's secure, we'll, we'll start our work.
Makes sense, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, sir.
Very good. Uh, and our other business?
Yep, I make a motion for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711 A1 for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective, prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of planning commission candidates.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Are the people here?
No.
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six, so I am going to ask Assistant Manager Shippey and Planning Director Ms. Jackson if you would join us in this meeting. We're gonna take about a three, four minute.